Today is Tuesday, December ninth. Time is four twenty-six P M. And we're convening at the Provo City School Board of Education. We're meeting at two eighty West, nine forty North in Provo, Utah. We'll begin with a roll call. I'm Jennifer Bartridge, Board President.
Gina Hill's Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Lisa Boyce, Board Member.
Meg Van Wagenen, Board Member.
Oh, Bailey, let's just say it, Board Member.
Emily Harrison, Board Member.
Carrie McPain, Board Member.
Devon Daly, Business Administrator.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent.
Thank you. And we want to welcome everybody else that's here with us today. And thank our Sergeant Bonnie and our tech department, who got everything organized for our meeting today. Do we have a motion to convene a study session?
I move that we convene a study session.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Boyce. Do we have seconds?
All second.
Second by Board Member Van Wagenen. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you close? All right, we are now in our study session. And we're gonna begin with our Board Member training. And today that is Board Member Van Wagenen.
I'll go quick, because we're starting late. Okay, today I'm just gonna briefly talk about professional development for the board. And largely that, there's a lot of things that go into that. But two big items are the USBA and NSBA. So both of these entities, Utah School Board Association and the National School Board Association, provide conferences and different resources for us as a board to utilize so that we are able to improve ourselves individually and collectively as a board. I kind of, especially as a new board member, it's helpful, it kind of helped build like a scaffolding of how things, how we kind of fit in a larger picture of public education. I think naively when I started, I was like, pretty insular, which I think is really important too. But also how public education is funded through our state budget, through federal monies, that it's helpful to understand the larger landscape. But also, I think specifically, USBA is a great place for us here locally to have as a resource. We have a legislative session coming up, which it provides a way to collaborate across the boards, across the district, and then work with our legislators. Where we know a lot of what happens there impacts our district and our schools and public education. So all that to say, these are two, both these organizations have conferences that we attend as a board. And outside of being able to improve ourselves as board members, I think they both are also great opportunities for us as a board to learn how to work together, to bond. I think one of my biggest takeaways being on the board is how helpful it is when the board is able to, even though we're different, work together and have good working relationships and mutual respect for one another. And I do think attending these conferences is something that helps us do that. Any questions? Am I under three minutes?
Good job.
Good job.
That was amazing.
And at our National School Board Association Conference this spring, our district class selected to teach a class this year. So that's really fun.
Yeah, nice job, leadership, you guys, for making that happen.
All right, thank you, Meg. Okay, up next, we have our Provo Peaks Land Trust Plan Amendment. And we'll turn it over to Devon, who's interested.
So this amendment, so let me give you a little bit of background. So trust lands, every year we have to make adjustments because we're given funding for a school that does not really qualify for it. And so I have to reallocate. The reallocation was done. What I didn't pick up was a couple of the schools. One of them was not a problem. Provo Peaks ended up with a little bit too much money left at the end of the year. So they, what I asked Ryan to do was just to revise his plan with just not any new goals, right? It was just an increase in expense in one of the categories in the personnel. So I brought him here, or he brought himself here, to answer any questions we may have specifically about his plan. But he did have this, he did get approval from his school community council. So it was just an adjustment to make sure that he, we didn't end up having him have to do extra training in January. So when you have too much carryover, they make you do all of this extra training. But if we catch it and do the revised plan before it gets to January, then he's golden and he doesn't have to do that.
Thank you, Devon.
I always try to help people avoid as many meetings as possible. So anyway.
Can Ryan come up and just explain real fast what changed?
Sure. Yeah, so it wasn't a large amount. It just was enough to make sure it went under that ten percent. So it was five thousand dollars additional towards one of the areas, which is personnel for M L support.
You have to be on the camera. Be on the camera.
Yeah, so, yeah, so five thousand dollars in the support for M L students. So we have two goals. One is increasing our cadence by three percent. The other is increasing our M L proficiency by three percent. And it's kind of, those, those students are in both goals. So the benefit for that extra support helps with both.
So what does that look like? Did you just have another question?
This is a great question. So one of the things, so we do get some M L funding from a separate source. And we have an M L instructional assistant that works with small group, which is focused mostly on our lowest R E T scores, which are like a one access scores. And a lot of conversational English and vocabulary that's really targeted towards helping those kids in their English proficiency for that access assessment they do yearly. And, but, one of the things that we did this year is we have separated the time that that is happening. So it's not happening during our win time, which is the, our reading win time. So it's a separate, so they have, they get both. And so it's actually helping, since part of the funds from it is helping to fund the M L aid that helps with those conversational focus groups and vocabulary. And then part of the funding is to help with the M L students that are receiving skill-based instruction during the win time.
Any other question? Okay, so this will be on our agenda.
I just want to compliment you on, sorry.
Go ahead.
On how, the fact that like all their minutes are on their book. That is awesome. A good job.
Thank you.
That's really great, for being very complimentary.
Ryan brought up a great, so good.
Thank you. That was a very good point.
Thank you for coming tonight, right?
Thank you.
And yeah, we'll vote on this on our business meeting to approve their updated. Okay. Our next agenda item is our Nevo School District boundary adjustment. Change with Devon?
So this is the last, well, not the last, because we would just get some notifications for new annexations in Provo. But that's gonna be a lot easier. This is the just historic annexations that had happened between Utah County land and the south end of Provo. So there's, there's four properties that are coming into Provo School District. One that was annexed a few years ago in Springville that will go to Nevo. So it's, it's not quite a wash, but it's pretty close in value. This is just the resolution to be able to get that taken care of with, with the county. So pretty easy. But then we'll get two tax districts for the county off the books. And it'll, we'll get everybody where they're supposed to be.
Awesome.
So you're saying we get four, they get one, but size-wise, it's about?
Valuation-wise, it's about the same. There are a lot of the industrial area and some of that, they're smaller. So there's four parcels, but some of the parcels are pretty small.
Thank you, Devon.
All right.
So we'll be back again in January with more.
But we're voting on this one too.
This one, we'll be voting on tonight.
Okay. Awesome. The next one is also for Devon to introduce to us or talk this through, is our timeline for our possible boundary adjustment.
It'll be kind of a tag team with Wendy and.
Can I add myself?
Bonnie on this part, you know, easier.
Yep. So there are two areas that we were looking at. Now, these are not necessarily things that have to happen. These were things that, when we originally had our boundary discussions and our boundary study, we talked to our transportation director about things that we could do that might clean up some of the boundaries that look a little weird, or that could clean up some of the transportation issues. There's nothing that is a significant issue that is required to be done. Just wanted to show that that is preface.
So one of the areas is that part on Carterville Road, where the one side of the street ends up feeding into Shoreline and Provo, and the other side of the street goes to Tenthian Centennial. We just want to push that all into the Provo shoreline boundary. So what that would be is if you wanted to move forward with that, then you would vote on that tonight, and that, and that starts that process. And, and we have to make sure that we're following, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, even though it's only, we entail like six to 10 houses, or something like that. So by January sixth, then, we would, we would issue a public hearing notice for the February tenth board meeting. Is when we are proposing that we would do the public hearing. And I'll kind of explain why that specific date was selected. Devon and I would work with communications to produce the information, make sure you had eyes on it ahead of time. And then start pushing that out via websites. But we also have to do that through mail to all of the households. So we have to like hand-deliver it, basically, to any household where that's affecting them personally.
Wait, you have to hand-deliver it?
Well, it has to be mailed. But I would prefer to just like actually make sure it gets to their house so that they see it and know it. It does say by mail, but, but we just, we just deliver it. That's what we did when we did the other ones, so. Then we would have, I'm gonna make them sign. I'm gonna make them, no, just me and Terry. Then on January thirteenth, at our, at our first January board meeting, we would have further discussion if you had any questions. Or as you're talking about this in your communities, there could be questions that come up. So we would just have a section of time. Obviously, in every board meeting, the public can provide input at any point in time in our business meetings, so, so we could do that. But then we are required to also hold an information meeting in the neighborhood. So our proposal would be to use one of those dates that's listed there at West Ridge, because it's, that's the closest area. And then to just make ourselves available to propose the information to allow them to ask any questions that they have. There are no decisions that are made at that, at that particular meeting. It is an information-only meeting. And then on February tenth is when the actual hearing would be held. And you could also do it on a separate night, if you wanted to completely separate it from a business meeting. That's up to you to decide that. But I think it'd be fine to do it on that evening. But not to hold the actual vote until the twenty-fourth. And I think we've talked about this before. The, the public feels pretty frustrated when the hearing and the vote are happening at the same time. It feels very much like we're not really taking in their input. And I feel like this gives us enough time to get the information out for us to gather the feedback, to hold the public hearing, and then to do the vote. And feels more transparent in that process. So that's the West Ridge side. I don't know if you want to ask specific questions about West Ridge, or you want us to talk about Rock Canyon and Edgemont, and then you can ask questions afterwards.
Right, good information.
Okay. So then Rock Canyon and Edgemont is just about basically making the busing more efficient. I'm gonna allow you to talk about that a little bit more, Devon. And Melanie actually brought up a really good question about, instead of moving thirty students to Rock Canyon, maybe taking nine students from Rock Canyon and moving them to, have I remembered this right, to Edgemont, so.
So one of the issues of that, of the boundaries is that there's just a section that is currently in Edgemont that goes, that is contiguous to Rock Canyon's boundary. So the reason that it went to Edgemont to Rock Canyon was because that would make that boundary all one boundary. We could move it, so those nine students, but we'd still have the same issue where that non-contiguous boundary is now a little bit bigger of an area. The, the bus that runs in the Rock Canyon area generally has less than ten students on it. So adding those other students there would make that bus actually be more efficient and be something that we would get. I mean, we are fully funded for it, but it is only nine students, generally.
But either way, you would be combining the busing.
Either way, you'd be combining the busing.
Why don't you bring up one of the questions that I thought our discussion on is really helpful.
So the other question that I brought up was, these are some of our low-income students that are in this area. And are we taking away some diverse students from the Edgemont area by taking away that group? Does that make sense? So.
Because it's not Carterville area.
That Carterville area, sometimes some of our lower-income students.
I think that's a great thing to consider. Also considering the different populations of the schools, like, does it really matter? Is it gonna move people around, right? Is that gonna affect things?
Wendy, Wendy mentioned to me too, whenever she's bringing this up, is that for Edgemont, for even a blue-ribbon school, they have to have a certain percentage?
They do. Yeah, they get recognized because their percentage of low-income is actually larger. Otherwise, they wouldn't meet those criteria for a blue-ribbon school, which is partially why Edgemont was recognized.
So I guess the question, because we can start a process. Starting a process now doesn't mean we're gonna vote yes at the end.
Sure.
Right? So the question today is going to be, do we want to start? And we're gonna vote separately, right? So do we want to start the process for the Carterville? Do we want to start the process for Rock Canyon and Edgemont? So I guess the question is, do we feel there's enough there to, we look at the Rock Canyon, Edgemont, start the process, get the public input, go through the whole process? Or do we have too many questions right now that we're not sure we want to go that route? Knowing that if we decided later we want to go that route, like, it's just, may not have gotten done in time for this next school year, so we would have to wait another school year.
And then there's not a critical issue to deal with here. So either way.
What is our cost savings by combining groups into one bus?
That is a good question. I would have to look and see what we'd actually be saving. We would, we'll probably just be shifting a bus to a different area and it wouldn't necessarily save.
Still be using the bus just the way it is.
We might not have an elementary route on that bus. It would still be a secondary route, which would cut hours from a bus driver possibly. So the savings would probably not be significant.
Meg?
I guess the question I'm asking is, is there advantage population-wise, like who, like between Edgemont and Rock Canyon? School size, like, is there a benefit for more students to be foundry from Rock Canyon? Is it smaller than Edgemont? Do you know what I mean?
I think there's a.
Or about the same.
I think there's a disadvantage in either direction. Like, they want more students at Rock Canyon, but at the same time, we also have low-income classes at Edgemont.
But not as much as the other D L I schools.
That's true. Not at all. It's not like a Canyon Crest or a Washington.
Anyway, there's.
They have so many other districts too.
Yeah, there's a hundred student difference in enrollment between Edgemont and Rock Canyon.
And this would add like thirty.
Thirty. But you also have to keep.
Or they might still choice, they're gonna choose.
Correct, because there are a few of the students that are, that are D L I. So they would like, would still go to Edgemont.
But then we'd be removing their bus first.
Almost seems, could you phase it out, like, not make this change until all those D L I kids? Anyway.
Well, the problem is, isn't that change? There's kids that could keep coming in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'd love to hear from the families themselves.
Yeah.
Like, does it make it easier to be closer to Rock Canyon? But obviously, they're not that close, they still get bused.
Because it's Rock Canyon, right?
So is it? But generally, for the families to show up to their school, would that make it easier or not? So leaving it the way it is, do they prefer to have access to the D L I if they need it?
When we have these public meetings, can we have maps? So people can see?
Oh, yeah. We will, yeah.
We can, people won't understand what we're talking about, even though we've seen the maps previously.
Yeah, I just pulled it up.
Yeah.
Anybody have other things to consider as we then decide how we're gonna vote on, do we?
Right, do we process?
Do we start the process or not?
Have we heard from principals or?
We haven't gotten that part. We will do that once you decide, once you decide.
Right, okay, okay. So it seems to me, it doesn't hurt to do, if we're doing the process for one, let's just do the process. I would suggest we do the process, and then we're gonna get this input and feedback while we do the process and make a decision. That's how.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I actually appreciate that.
Information gathering.
Yeah, that's what the process kind of becomes.
And we could also just say, oh.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, just.
Okay. Anybody have anything else they want to say about the adjustment? Gina?
I just think, coming from one of the higher, areas with higher numbers of low S E S kids, I think, and I think we will do this anyway, but I, I think the decision we make needs to be based on what is best probably for those students, which may be hard to tease out. But I'm uncomfortable with, and I'm, I'm not saying that anybody here was suggesting this, but I'm comfortable leaving them in a school that maybe they would do better at the other school or whatever, because of the blue-ribbon status of another school. So I just want to publicly say that I will, I, I think I'll be looking more at what is best for the students, rather than necessarily what qualifies people for different work.
Okay. Great. We'll be voting on those tonight in our business meeting. Our next item is the fun discussion of the calendar.
Oh, I know you love the calendar, everybody.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year.
Okay. So I just want to review, and Caleb's here to add. And Jason is, we're grateful he doesn't have to say anything about the calendar at all. So we sent out these three different calendars. And what you're noticing in whether you're dealing with the combined group, you're dealing with the parent group, you're dealing with the student group, or you're dealing with the employee group, which is down here, all of them favor Calendar C, which is, it starts on August eighteenth. There's the two-week full Christmas break. There's a week for spring break, and it still ends before Memorial Day. There is, you'll notice a little bit of a disparity between where the parents are landing and where the students are landing. And where even parents and employees are landing in this process.
Can you just say those percentages?
Yeah, I would be happy to. Yeah, so combined of everybody, Calendar A was seventeen percent. This was the one that was the later start, with a two-week winter break ending after Memorial Day. Calendar B was only thirteen percent. This is also a later start, shorter fall break, shorter winter break, but ending before Memorial Day. And then Calendar C is seventy percent, which is starting on August eighteenth, traditional three-day fall break, two-week winter break, ending before Memorial Day. So even calendars A and B added together are not coming close to Calendar C. So I just want it known there, that that is the case. And, and in policy, it is entirely up to you to decide what you want to do. It is not required that you follow the survey results. It is just required that we gather the surveys so that you have that feedback as you're making some decision about this. When we laid out the calendar, Caleb also put in potential end-of-term dates and those types of things. I think that kind of ruffled, concerned a few teachers and that type of thing. That is not what you're adopting at this point. You're adopting basically the start date, the end date, the fall break, the Christmas break, the spring break. We can adjust, and we'll work with the association on when that semester needs to end, just like we did this last year. Because for this year's, we originally had the semester ending after Christmas break to even out the first semester, second semester days. But then when we realized that Chromebooks are turned in as early as they are, when graduation was hitting, all of those pieces, that's when we bumped it back to before Christmas break. So we'll look at those things, because we want to make sure that that gets balanced appropriately.
Question about that specifically? So we showed term.
Yes.
And then semesters, I guess, are two terms?
Uh huh.
And so if we're going to adjust it later, is it wise for us to put those dates in, to put those days in there? Or should we leave that out in the future? Does that make sense? Because I think it confused people.
Yeah. Well, we can, in the future, we can, we can leave that out and just say this is.
Because it can be adjusted, right?
It can be completely adjusted. We don't have our comp days, because our comp days are negotiated through parent-teacher conferences. We don't have the professional development days in, because those are negotiated through negotiations. So there's a whole bunch of the calendar that actually isn't put in place. We just need to know when that start date and end date is, and when those breaks are. That's really what parents want to know. And then we build the rest of the calendar around those negotiated items. So. Questions? Thoughts? I will tell you what calendar I prefer, just so that I know, because I feel like it needs to be. I really do prefer Calendar B.
Me too! I'm on a bigger summer break!
Thank you.
Well, I will say, I've been on board for seven years now, and it's very consistent that the preference is, we need our full two-week winter break. We want to end before Memorial Day. Nobody loves starting earlier in August, but people will take that in order to get the full break.
Last time the numbers were pretty close. In fact, if you combined option B and C last time, there were, it was a few more than actually one. That wanted the later start date. Those votes were just split between the two different patterns. So it, this year is different than last year.
I think it's also different this year. And it will be interesting when Memorial Day hits earlier again.
Yeah.
Right now, this is towards the end of a later Memorial Day. So everything, even our early option is later than like what we did this year, right? So it all fluctuates based on Memorial Day. All right, so tonight, someone will make a motion to approve one of these. I assume we'll go with the one that the survey results lean to, unless that someone wants to share right now why they feel otherwise.
Well, I, to Wendy's point about Calendar B, and Terry, you like that one. I am curious, because I think the surveys do shake out where people want their long breaks. That happens, and then it's still frustration that school's starting so soon. I am curious if we go with the latest, I guess A, you could do that too. But B gives you, still out before Memorial, but just trying a year where we start as late as possible and see what the, I just, you know what I mean? I just feel like that is what my experience is. There's a reason we choose the long breaks, but then there's still this pushback despite the survey.
I've heard it more than ever.
Everyone's like, it starts, it starts.
Teachers and everybody, that we started so early this year.
This year? But this already is five days later.
Yeah, eighteen is later. I just, I am thinking, that's how.
I think I would be willing to do that on a year where we're earlier. But a year where we're already on the eighteen.
You think that's, yeah.
I don't know if you guys remember, a few years ago, Alpine went a day or two later than we did before they started their Christmas break. And they, everybody was mad at them. Parents were very upset that they went up so close to Christmas.
But the parents I heard from actually were like, yeah, but then we, but we got to actually have August for summer break. So I don't think everybody was mad. I think there were people really happy about that calendar.
The thing is, you're always gonna have people mad.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's the thing. So I just think, like, if we are willing to try it, I mean, I think it might just be that people don't realize that it could still, like, they might actually really like this calendar.
Yeah.
They're, I don't know.
Gina?
I did vote for C, but I do think maybe we should do it on a year where not seventy percent. Like seventy percent. I would like to try something else, but we go against seventy percent. I think we're asking.
That's a good point.
And then if anybody says anything, I've screenshotted this, and I'll just send it back.
Seventy percent of you wanted this.
Yeah, I mean, that's my.
I mean, it's almost four thousand votes, like that's.
Is that more?
That's a lot of votes.
Yeah, I know a lot of people, I know at the PK Media Canyon Crest, there were a lot of feelings in the room about calendars from employees and parents. And I just said, vote, get your friends, vote, lobby for the calendar you like, vote some, like how we, we need to see, it will help us to see votes on the calendar.
I love it that the students voted. Like we send it out to them and they have opinions about it.
What did you vote for, Bailey? Do you want to share? I'm curious.
I think I put a for C.
How many employees do we have?
A little under two thousand.
And do all of them get a vote regardless?
Just over two thousand.
And so their turnout is low. I'm curious why, why. I'm looking at Christie RPA.
Well, but I mean, that is including all the classified employees, and I don't know that all the numbers in cafeteria workers are concerned about it.
Do you feel like teachers are actually still going out?
I think teachers are definitely not going out. And if you're looking at teachers, if we were to look about as a percentage of teachers, that's almost, that would be.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
I was just going to say, next, for next year, can we have an option on the survey where there's a long winter break, but then short fall and spring breaks could we, so we can have a late start and end up early and end before Memorial Day?
So like what kind of winter break wouldn't do a?
For me, fall break.
A spring break?
Fall break would be what, one, two days, and then spring break two or three days? I mean, that's how it was when I was in high school. We only got like three days of spring break. Well, they thought for like Friday and Monday. And that was, that was our spring break. Yeah.
That was terrible, Terry.
I'm coming from England where their summer break is only six weeks long. And I'm like, no, that's too short. Let's have some longer summer break. I want the longest summer break.
Okay, moving on to our next item, we will now turn it over to Wendy, or who are we trying to?
I mean.
Okay. For our dual-language immersion, we're going to talk about some updates and it's part of an ongoing discussion.
And Doug had another assignment, so he wasn't, he's the head of our DLI kind of subcommittee that's been working on this, so Doug Finch isn't able to be here. But I do have Jamie Leachey from Lakeview Elementary, and Sarah Parrish is our DLI specialist. And so they're going to add some insights as well, just kind of coming from a school that has operated with this, that might not be reflected entirely in this particular presentation. And then a couple of you sent me some questions, and I have some of those answers, but not all of them as of yet. So just so that the public understands, this is an update on dual-language immersion. We're not changing anything. We've asked more questions. Nobody is killing any programs, nothing like that is happening. So, but we want to make sure that we're giving you the information that you need to help you make an informed decision, because I was also making some assumptions about different programs. And as we started gathering this data, a lot of those assumptions have been challenged as a result. And so that's actually been really helpful for my perspective as well. So there was some additional demographic data that was asked for. And so one of the things that we wanted to make you aware of is our five elementary schools. And that middle column there says out of district choice. This is the number of individuals that are coming into the school from outside of the school district. And then on the right is the number of DLI permits approved. So these permits are for individuals that don't, that aren't boundaried to that school that are choosing to be part of the DLI program. Anyone that's part of that boundary school can already be part of that, so, yes. Out and in of the district.
Okay, so the thirty-eight is a part of like, for Tempanogus, it's part of eighty-two.
Correct, correct, yeah.
So like Edgewood, does that mean that there's seventeen people who are taking their, the English side?
Yep, that's correct. Yep, great question. And then when we look at, I just wanted to make sure that you were understanding the acronyms. So when we say SED, that's Students with Disabilities, ML is multilingual students, and the NHRF means no high-risk factors. What that means is they're not a student who is multilingual, they're not a student with a disability, they're not low-income, they're generally not of a racial, racial student group other than white. So that's how the state and the feds define high-risk factors. We could get into a big conversation about whether or not race is technically a risk factor, right? That could take hours to talk about that piece, but that is how the federal state defines that. So what this is showing you on this particular graph is you'll notice all of your blue graphs are going to be your DLI schools, your non-DLI schools, and your district schools. And this is just that in, in your DLI schools, across the board, twelve percent are SED, seventeen percent in non-DLI schools. So you can kind of compare that versus fifteen percent across the district. And then you see that with MLs. Notice that your ML percentage is much more closely aligned with what district averages are, but also notice that your no-high-risk factors are generally higher in a DLI school. And then this is by program. I think this is interesting, and it does grade, the numbers along the bottom represent grade levels. So I tried to put that out to the side so that you would know that. I think this is kind of a fascinating situation, so I'm just going to point this out to you. Notice first off that your SED population is always lower on your DLI side than on your non-DLI side. It's always lower than even your non-DLI schools. But what is fascinating is watch this number drop in DLI from third to fourth grade. When you look at the data that Nate has gathered, Nate Mitchell has gathered, that is their year of greatest attrition for DLI as well. So there is a hypothesis, there's no causation that has been established. But if a student has a disability and is starting to really struggle in DLI, are we moving them out of DLI in fourth grade and this, and moving them to the, to the non-DLI side in that school? Are they returning to their boundary school? What's exactly happening there? We're not tracking exactly where those students are going. The people are like, why are these kids disappearing? That could be a piece of it. Also remember that you all, this was another factor that our two great Nates also brought up, is that sometimes you have speech IEPs, and so students will graduate out of that too, right? And so by third grade, they've made enough progress that we can exit them. So there's, there's some different factors that are happening there, just to be aware of. But it does support sometimes when teachers will say to you, when I go into a DLI school and I'm talking to the English side teachers, they'll say, my classes feel overwhelming because I have a lot of IEPs, or my classes feel overwhelming. There are some numbers that are supporting that, those perceptions that are existing there, right? So I just, I just want to validate that. Notice that the ML percentages are more equalized, so we are seeing, and we did separate out this data for Tempanogus because we use kind of DLI at Tempanogus Elementary as a type of almost ML program for them. But you'll notice your discrepancies, and in some cases, when you look at some of the grade levels, you actually have a higher percentage of your ML students in the DLI program than you do in, on the non-DLI side. And Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like this is more true like when we're seeing this with Spanish, especially with Tempanogus, and also with your program with Portuguese.
We have a lot of heritage students, which is a broad spectrum of a definition, because students may not be Portuguese speakers, but still be heritage students if their parents are Brazilian. Yeah, for sure the most was Spanish and Portuguese.
So you said you separated out Tempanogus?
Well, I saw they have their own flight, but so they're not in.
Oh, they are in there.
They are in that data.
So that was all five schools, and then we'll look at Tempanogus.
Yeah. Great question. The no-high-risk factors here, you do notice in some grade levels where you see it being higher of a percentage, but it, it also isn't as much of a discrepancy as sometimes people indicate. So sometimes people are trying to indicate that in those DLI classes, we're getting all of the gifted students, we're getting all of the kids that don't have any issues. That's not necessarily what, what we're seeing here. Now, in DLI schools, you are seeing more of that discrepancy happening, but not, but not between those two classes. So go ahead, Gina.
No, no, I was, no, I'm getting it all in my brain.
Okay. This is Tempanogus data, and the reason that we pulled this out is because there's just some interesting things that happen at Tempanogus, and I do want it mentioned, it is not following the state model, but still has some really kind of fascinating things happening. So you'll notice that your, and by the way, the reason there's no SED for fourth grade is because the number is so small it couldn't register there. So it is, it isn't that that was a mistake, it was just in fourth grade. There just isn't. You'll notice that in the lower grades, you see those SED numbers kind of between the two are a little more equalized, whereas then you see sixth grade, and that kind of expands a little bit more. Just kind of some interesting things. And then you'll notice on the M L side, especially when you're looking at fifth and sixth grade, notice that your ML population is definitely higher, and that is because we are using that as, as almost a type of, I don't want to use the word intervention, because it isn't an intervention, but as a way to help support our multilingual learners at Tempanogus. This is the no-high-risk factors at Tempanogus. And so you'll notice that those, Tempanogus is a highly impacted school, right? And you see that playing out in its, in its data as well in comparison to the rest of the district. That just reinforces how highly impacted Tempanogus is.
Wait, sorry. If you go back one slide for me.
Yep.
So this is just Tempanogus versus all of the other schools in the district, right?
Of the non, of the non-DLI schools, so we don't, yes, that's correct.
So that data is, yeah, I get it.
Just, so when it says DLI and non-DLI, it's just Tempanogus.
Okay, that is correct.
Those two are district, that is non-DLI schools.
Yeah. So just some conclusions to draw from this. We do have a lower prevalence of SED students in DLI programs, which we've suspected. We have noticed our attrition rate is highest from third to fourth grade of students moving out of DLI programs. Jamie, actually, will share with you some ideas that she has and that she utilizes at Lakeview where we don't quite have those same attrition rates. And so notice that I just asked that question. Is it possible SED students are being moved to the non-DLI side? I think the other issue is speech, or are there things where students are exiting? Is that a natural time where students are, where we're recognizing that they don't need those supports anymore? And that we don't notice as much of a difference in SED numbers at Tempanogus. Higher numbers of ML students in DLI programs than in non-DLI. And then the number of ML students at Tempanogus, we've already kind of talked about all of, all of those things, so I kind of did that as we went. So please go ahead, Lisa.
I do have a question, I guess, about the prevalence of our SED population, for example, Tempanogus. I also wonder, it's sometimes tricky when you have a lot of ML students to identify some of those things. Like I think assessment, for example, as a speech pathologist is tricky when I'm looking with an ML student. So I just wondered if that also.
It can very well, I mean, one of the things that you're also going to notice is, and you see this, and it shouldn't happen, but it does, you will see students being more quickly identified as SED in higher-income schools than in lower-income schools, just because they just see that, they feel like it's because there's a disability, rather than there's an attitude that the kids are just behind type of thing.
Or parent advocacy, that parents understand what their rights are a little bit.
And we do have to be really cautious about when we're identifying students with disabilities, when they're speaking another language, to make sure that we're eliminating, it isn't a language issue that's happening. So it takes, it's a much longer process.
About the, are they just graduating from SED basically between third and fourth? Think we could just pull the data district-wide and see if that's happening.
They're exiting.
Yes, we could.
Yep. And then we also talked about the prevalence of students with no-high-risk factors higher in DLI schools, until you hit the upper grades, which I thought was a little bit interesting there, and then the exception to that being Tempanogus. And then I just wanted to talk about why does it matter? I do think it provides some information to show that the experience of students and teachers and some of the things that we hear from parents is, I mean, it does validate some of that anecdotal data that we're hearing. And, and so there, there are some differences that are existing, but it probably isn't necessarily exactly what we thought it would be. It's, it, it does kind of provide some interesting context for some things there. Then I want to talk about some of the high school DLI data points. And so this tells us by school what our passage rate is. And I have asked Nate for the number of students that are enrolled in the class who actually took the test. He will get that to me by tomorrow, so I'll send that out to you. But I, but there is still an indication that I, I do think a majority of the students are taking the AP test because of the numbers that are ending up in the bridge courses. It would be a much smaller number because your entrance into bridge is passage of the AP exam. You can't get into those bridge classes without doing that. And so we did put the passage rate there, and then notice we put on the bridge program that they've completed three years of bridge, and I, and I want to make that distinction there because that's a pretty hefty commitment that those students are making. We're also going to be looking at anyone who completes the AP course and possibly just one bridge course, because as you start getting competition for different electives and things, I don't want to minimize the importance of what's happening there. And then I did pull the national pass rate so that you could see that. I think it's important to note that a lot of individuals that do take the AP Chinese test are Chinese heritage, and so that is why you see that percentage being high. You get, we hear frustration from parents saying, this test is very hard. It is very hard for, for a person where English is your first language, like that would make sense.
Yeah, because I was kind of shocked that that's the national pass, but it sounds like it could have those native speakers. Easy to see on higher than.
The other piece I wanted to point out is the reason that at Provo High, we don't have a completer for third year is because this is the first, this is the second year we've had bridge at Provo High, because Tempanogus was not following that state model. We had not introduced it, and then as we worked with UBU, we were able to get it. They were like, no, it's just about the AP test. It doesn't matter what the elementary degree looked like that we came through. So next year, we will have third-year students in bridge for Spanish after Provo High. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about these teaching assignments so that you're understanding the load that the teachers have and what we do to help create a full schedule for the teachers. So when you're looking at, for example, the Spanish DLI teacher, you notice that they have two sections. We either call it AP or DLI five. Sometimes if a student doesn't pass the AP test, then it's DLI five, and then the second year will be the AP course, and then they take the test again to be able to enter into bridge. We have one bridge section right now. It is a total FTE for that teacher of one, because that teacher is teaching a study hall and two concurrent enrollment Spanish classes. Those concurrent enrollment Spanish classes, however, are not at the three thousand level that are at the bridge level. So they're at your one thousand and two thousand level, and so don't equate that. These students that are in bridge are achieving at a much higher level than the concurrent enrollment. Think about when you took, you know, your Spanish class in college, that's, this is a very, the bridge program is a very different class than, than what you're doing there. You'll see that for our Tempe U High Spanish teacher, notice there, and I can't remember, I'm trying to remember what else that teacher taught, because there were three and four, and she's a 1.125. I'll have to think of that, I might have. Oh, it's because I forgot to put in the number. She has two Spanish courses as well. I have CE Spanish courses, I'm sorry, I will correct that so that that number's correct there. Provo High for Portuguese is, she's teaching five periods, but she's a full FTE because she also supports with ML testing and ELD support, so she doesn't have a class of students that she is supporting. So that's why I put zero as other sections taught, but she's fulfilling. You have to think about how many students have to be tested at Provo High, because they're multilingual students. It's hundreds of students, and so we need an additional person to help support that. With French, you'll notice that you have five sections of French there, and then that teacher does teach one French three section, and then Chinese, and then that Chinese teacher is also teaching an ELD section, so they're actually more than a single FTE. So just wanted you to kind of see how we make these teachers full-time. They are supporting students outside of DLI in other courses, particularly in languages. And so there's this belief that, I think sometimes that we're not providing those language opportunities for students. That's not correct, because these individuals are quite the experts in language, and they are providing that.
Wendy, can I ask?
Please.
Just so AP though, most of these students probably have gone through DLI, but you could, are some taking the AP test not, or they've taken the AP classes without having done the DLI program, right?
Yes, yes.
Maybe not as a freshman, but like at Duncan.
Yes, especially in Spanish, especially in Spanish, you're going to see that. So there, there are several students that could be enrolled in AP Spanish that haven't gone through the traditional DLI program, but they will still count towards into that bridge class.
Right, because it's just the AP test. So, but those numbers aren't necessarily like thirty-seven AP students right now means, oh, they're all from Tempanogus.
Yep, that's correct.
DLI, no, there's also.
Yes, there could be a heritage, a person who just speaks Spanish, and so it's like, there are teachers like, you need to take the AP Spanish test so you get your seal of bilinguality, and this is what you need to do. It is very, very difficult to go back through and take that list of students. It is very, very difficult to go back through and take that list of students and track that all the way back.
No, I don't think we need to. I just am trying to help myself kind of understand, picture.
There are students who take Spanish I, Spanish II, Spanish III, Spanish AP. Yes, absolutely.
Sure.
That's also mixed in there.
I am curious, that is, Chinese has the highest number of AP students.
So also remember, Jared reminded me of this, I think it was Jared that reminded me of this. When Chinese, when these kids were there, there was a larger cohort of Chinese. There were three classes.
Oh, that's right.
So that's why you're seeing that. So you are going to see that number come down as a result. And then this just kind of shows you, I, I think the graph on the right is important. Total number of students sort of district-wide in secondary DLI by program. And, and you're right, some of these students might not have been in DLI, but that's hard to pull that specific information. But I think it's important to think about when you're looking at the numbers that are coming through in terms of the actual cohort itself, that the lowest is a third. A third of the students that go through are completing at some level at the high school level in this DLI program. You're seeing a higher level of participation in Chinese. Because of that three cohort model, that number will come down a little bit. But I think it's very safe to say that at least a third to 40% of your students that started DLI are finishing out in some sort of secondary situation. And I think that's an important number to have when you're looking at this. And when you're looking at that kind of number of students, that's, that's quite a hefty, that's a good number. Like, I, I don't look at that and think, wow, that's a tiny number of students. I actually feel like that's a pretty, a pretty solid number. So we've kind of talked about this. Forty-four percent of all students who start the program finish with at least successful enrollment in AP Advanced or DLI Honors. Our most successful programs right now are Chinese and Portuguese. I think Provo High's situation with the bridge is kind of skewing that data a little bit.
Sorry, I was just, successful meaning the most participation?
Yes, okay. Most participation and completion.
And completion, okay. Despite like the different AP passing rate.
Yes, correct. Usually with Chinese, what happens is, like when you're looking at this, and Sarah's going to correct me if I say something wrong. But if a student can't pass it their ninth grade year, then they'll enroll. And they, they take it again their tenth grade year. And so it is, it, it, there is an assumption that it might take a student two years to be able to pass that AP exam at the Chinese level. So it is just a more difficult situation there. So our next steps, and we have sent you this copy of the DLI survey that we're trying to gather data from both our DLI and our non-DLI parents at the DLI schools because we're trying to really tap into what is the experience of those non-DLI students. We are also looking at ways to gather some information from students who have choice to non-DLI school, schools because of a fear of negative experiences in non-DLI classrooms. Melanie, you shared an email with me where students that were living in Edgemont, Edgemont or Canyon Crest, one of the two that choice into Rock Canyon, so that they had more choices of what those classes are. That's going to be harder to pull those, but we can do that. And, and probably what we're going to do is do something that's a little more qualitative with those because it's a lower number to just talk with some of those parents about that. So I think some of the questions that we have is how do we preserve DLI and make it more cost-effective? I had a great conversation with Sarah a little bit about this as we were looking at ways in which to do that and some ideas moving forward. And then how are we improving the experience of our non-DLI students in those classes? And Jamie, you had some things that you wanted to add and share with us that you shared with me in the email. So please, yeah. Do you remember what those are or do I need to...
No, I have it.
She wants you to go to the front, so you're on camera.
Where?
To the front of it. So you have to stand in front of the Believe in the Magic sign and all the background.
Stand or sit?
You can say.
So just a couple of things that I've learned. I, I worked with the state dual-language immersion program for six years before I came to be a principal, assistant principal. And there's several things that I feel like those two perspectives have helped me learn from. So one is that, to me, it really is important that we continue to add kids to the program throughout the, their experience. So Canada is where a lot of the immersion research come from, comes from. And Canada has multiple entry points, early in the program, middle, like fourth grade, and then as well in the secondary level. And at the, at the state level, they really have discouraged principals from adding kids to the program after second grade. But I have pushed back on that and the state is aware that I have. They know that we've been adding kids. And primarily, it's just because for us to keep healthy numbers, we just can't keep having attrition. And then the other piece was, I had parents and students approaching me that wanted it. And they were saying, like, "We, we'll take the risk, we'll take on the assignment." Particularly, I had a lot of like Spanish-speaking families where they're like, "We want Portuguese as a third language." And so I started adding kids all the way up through sixth grade. Like, we added a sixth grader this year with zero Portuguese or Spanish experience. And we've just found ways to work around it. Like, he's a volunteer in the first-grade Portuguese class to be able to help with some pieces there. And it really has helped us keep healthier numbers throughout the program. And my personal opinion is that languages acquisition is going to be challenging at any age. But if we can have kids starting in Spanish at secondary school, why can't they start in fourth grade? We have kids move from other countries and join English in fourth, fifth, sixth. So that has helped us a lot at Lakeview with our numbers. The other thing that I think is really important is we have to constantly message that dual-language immersion is not a gifted program. The only requirement to participate in dual-language immersion is a long-term commitment to learning a language. And that is it. I have worked really hard to, like, help my teachers understand that we do not talk to parents in a way that makes it sound like, oh, your student isn't advanced enough for DLI. And that's really crucial, particularly at the kindergarten level because that's the teacher, those are the teachers that are being asked by parents, like, "Should my child do DLI?" And so really working with those kindergarten teachers to understand every human being can learn languages. We all have that capacity. And we have students at Lakeview that have autism that are in our program. And I, I actually went and pulled our sped numbers so that you could see. So like, at Lakeview, for first grade and DLI, we have six students with IPs. Traditional has seven. In second grade, we have seven in DLI, two traditional. And third, we have three versus four, three and five. But you really, like, you see that this commitment that we've had is being reflected in those numbers where we're educating teachers about it, we're educating parents about it, and really trying to make sure that people understand that any student can learn a language. And in fact, in many situations, for students with disabilities, that is their, like, shining star, is that they're bilingual, trilingual. And, you know, I just really think it's really important that we teach people about that. And then the second part of that is that we do not remove kids from the program unless we have gone through a process to prove that that is why, that they need to be. So like, research shows that generally when kids are removed from DLI, they continue to perform at the exact same level academically in reading and math. And so too often, like, for example, third-grade teachers, when I came to Lakeview, I heard third-grade teachers tell parents at parent-teacher conferences, like, "I don't think your kid can do DLI." And that was completely, like, unacceptable to me. And we've worked really hard to say, never, ever, ever should a teacher be saying that a student can't do DLI. Like, we know that, how important, you know, self-efficacy is in kids and teachers believing that students can do it. And then if parents express concerns, we have a process for that. So we're going to meet with the parents, we're going to say, "What are your concerns?" And we're going to start addressing them through interventions, through special education, through lots of different pieces there. And eventually, if the parents, like, ultimately, of course, Utah parents have control over their child's education. We're not going to deny them being able to leave, but we're really going to use that process to educate them that leaving DLI is not going to change their students' levels in reading and, and math. And let me see, I think those were all of my biggest pieces in terms of just, I think it's a lot of education for administrators, teachers, families. And then the one other thing that I'll just throw in there is, I have, in working with schools across the state, it is much easier to run DLI in a big school. And it, I recognize that you're looking at a lot of boundary situations. And over and over, I have found that we do a better job of running DLI when there is a robust population. I think specifically in Provo, on the west side, we've had a lot of success with parents not feeling disenfranchised by our programs when they're not in it because at our school, their numbers are pretty even between DLI and non-DLI. Running it in a smaller school is extremely challenging. And that has been the case in every district that I've worked with, with DLI.
I also want to point out, at Lakeview, Jamie has a, so when they go into specials, they're not, it's not, DLI students have specials at this time and non-DLI students, they're mixed. So they have an opportunity to collaborate together and they're seen as a whole school. That also makes a huge difference, I think, in terms of how that operates.
Yeah, each specialty group is composed of 25% of each of the four classes. And the other thing I'm really committed to is that our PLCs, that our four teachers are all full participants in those PLCs. So the dual-language immersion teacher is committed to helping every student that grade in the same way and really taking a lot of ownership and responsibility. And they have so much to offer. Like, at my school this year, they're teaching professional development about how to teach multilingual students. So really, it's a commitment, I always say, "Lakeview is a multilingual and multicultural school. We're not a DLI school." And I hope that every kid in our building becomes multilingual at some point in their educational career. And, you know, when that happens is up to parents, but we really want them to see that they're reflected in that.
Okay, so any questions for Jamie or Sarah?
So my first question is, when you said the word robust, what would it be a number?
So ideally, honestly, it's a lot of Lakeview. We have about 100 students at each grade level and 25 kids in each, in each classroom. We stack it in the lower grades. So like, in first grade, we have right now 61 kids that are in DLI in the two classes and 40. So our first grade is lower on the traditional side. And then we watch that, like, you know, subtly shift. If we're adding kids throughout that, then we really don't see a lot. Like, I mean, many of my upper grades are actually still pretty even, about 25 each. But that's going to be, that's right where we're about half and half, is where half our school's DLI and half our school's not DLI. When you have one class, you know, you're going to see those inequities way more because you don't have the flexibility to place them. And also the kids that are in the one non-DLI class are together like forever. Whereas when you have the two classes, you're mixing those classes back and forth throughout the grade levels. So about 100 students per grade level, 700 kids overall. That's very similar to, to Lakeview. I think Timpanogos and Edgemont are pretty close to that. And it just, it's a lot easier to manage. And also as a principal, to really dedicate, like, you know, DLI is one program at my school. It's not a DLI school.
This makes me think of when we were looking at the survey. I hear the most from parents who have moved out of a DLI school for some of their concerns. I would really think that we need to survey every parent in the district because I really think people not in DLI schools have a lot of feelings. And maybe they're based in their experiences or maybe the things they've heard, but I still think we need that information. Why, why have they chosen what they've chosen? Or why are they feeling what they're feeling? And what are they so worried about, right? And I don't know, just as you're talking about this, I'm just thinking of the people whose voices I think still need to come into the DLI conversation, which are the parents not at DLI schools. I don't know if there's a way to do that or if that's too overwhelming or too much data, but...
Trying to get at why maybe some of those families have chosen that non-DLI school to choose into.
Yes, yes.
It would need to be, it would need to be like where, what is your neighborhood boundary? Did you go to your neighborhood school?
Sure. In my, in my mind, I think we push out the survey the way that it is and then we loop back and do a second survey that does, that taps into that. Because what I'm concerned about is if you start mixing that situation, you are going to have parents who have no idea what we're talking about and they have just moved their kids for some other reason. And they won't understand what the context is. That's going to be hard to piece out in terms of just an overall survey. I would be concerned about that slightly, so.
I just know there are parents, not even in my neighborhood, but throughout Provo that have, that have talked to me about their views on DLI. And I want those voices included in the conversation.
I agree, Lisa. And I think when we're ready to create that survey, there's a way to phrase it where we can weed them out after a few questions, right?
Sure.
Like, "Did you ever consider, or were you ever in a DLI school?" And if it's like, "No, no," then they're done. Like, they don't have to go answer all those other questions, right? So I think that's important to hear.
Do you have other questions for Wendy or Jamie?
With, you're saying that you're allowing students to come in at any, any level. Do you refine that some are going out and then coming back in?
Very rarely. Like, I can think of maybe, I've had that situation once a few years ago, so not, not very often. We really try and use that process of talking to parents to help them understand what it entails, what it means. You know, occasionally, like, for example, we, we had one situation where the student, their, their classification of autism really made it hard for them to deal with transitions. So the transitions of DLI were, were what was hard for them. It wasn't like the actual instruction. And so working through that digging down, we were able to say like, okay, that, now we know what that issue is. And, and that is going to be a problem and work with them. But generally, the parents, because we've gone through a really careful process, they, they stay with the decision. And, and one thing too, I think that's really important, is not only do we have to educate non-DLI teachers, but also DLI teachers. Because some DLI teachers think you can't add kids later. They, you know, they're, they're not going to be able to do it. And so really pushing them to understand, well, other teachers in English are doing this. They're getting kids from, from different countries at any point in time. And that's something that we should be able to expect of every teacher. And if anything, they're trained to be able to provide the supports and comprehensible input to make that happen.
I have a question. Maybe Darrell should answer this, but, so how does having DLI affect the high school's ability to offer other languages? I know Provo High has sign language. What about, I know when I was in high school, it did give, we had French and German and Japanese and Russian and...
I can speak generally, but what it does is it's, it has the potential to kill some of those other programs because you don't have enough students signed up to take them. So hiring a full-time teacher that can't teach anything else but that language becomes difficult. Therefore, sometimes it can kill that language, if that's what you're asking. I don't know specifically if that's happened to a language in a high school, but I know as a principal, I, I lost my French program with DLI coming in, but my sign language class tripled, that's the thing, right?
Yeah. And it's, so what are the other languages that Provo and Timpu are teaching?
And Schreiner and Centennial.
Timpu has German and ASL, right?
And then they've got three.
And they did have a Mandarin one class, did they now, or they got rid of it?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, honestly, that's problematic.
Because what you're saying is that the resources for languages are going just to the DLI classes we have.
I'm actually less that are going to...
I'm less concerned about adding more languages to it. I have a lot in our district. But I was actually just talking to a parent that I met this weekend who chose, well, they moved into the Edgemont boundary. They wanted their kid to go into French, but were told they couldn't. And then they got to Centennial and there was not an option for anyone not DLI to, to start learning a language. And that, that is my concern because there's reasons why people don't feel they're ready for the... And that, that is my concern because there's reasons why people don't feel they're ready for the whole program in elementary, but they still want to have those options when they get to the middle school.
Or they moved here, like, we moved here and then my kids, they couldn't get a beginning language course. Do you know what I'm saying? Because there weren't enough people available to keep that class cool, which I understand, but then that, and there's... I feel like in secondary school especially, that's such a beautiful time for a second language to be introduced to a student and an important time. And so then I think that's, it's just one unfortunate kind of thing that goes with though. All the rest of the commitment of the kids who are doing all these amazing things and getting all the way through that French program. Gina, did you have your hand up?
I'd stay on this.
Well, I was just gonna dig. My daughter's experience with Centennial was, she got to do a half a semester of Spanish and that was it. She wasn't allowed to have any other options.
Half a semester?
A quarter. Yeah, they had quarters for a little while and then after...
Yeah, and that was it.
That's not good.
So I also wanna caution us to, on, there are several things that can dictate to what's available at the secondary level. So for example, even if we didn't have DLI at a school like Shoreline, when you only have seven class periods, you have fewer spots for electives. And so students may be choosing performing arts and things. And so you just, you offer courses based on what students sign up. So I don't want us to quite demonize DLI in saying, well, it's not offered because of this. Sometimes it is because of what actual numbers are. I think the other pieces, like, Terry, when you and I were in high school in like the middle ages, like, they, uh... It was, I mean, a teacher could teach Russian because they had gone on a mission to Russia, but, or, or, well, they wouldn't have gone on a mission to Russia when we were in high school. They would have gone on a mission to, say, Germany, right? But they didn't have to have the certifications that you do now. The levels of endorsement and the requirements that are required of our teachers are much higher now. And so, and so there's a lot of pieces that make that not quite, uh, apples-to-apples kind of thing. I agree with you, Jennifer. I get concerned if a student can only access that language because it's DLI. If I'm gonna have that language at that school, I should be able to access it either on the DLI or on the non-DLI side. Like, I think each school should be dedicated to, we're gonna offer these languages, whether you're DLI or not, and these are the options. And, and so I think that's gonna be something that our parents are gonna want us to prioritize as we move forward. Did I say that right? Okay. You and I have very different views about DLI.
I guess that's where it becomes difficult though, to have, you know, Spanish, DLI, a full Spanish class. Spanish is a long one.
Yeah, that is, but French is, yeah, French or Chinese, yeah.
That's where it becomes difficult significantly, Spanish.
Because Spanish has always been popular. I mean...
You can fill it up pretty quickly, yeah. Gina, do you want us to come back to you?
It'll, it'll come up later. The discussion's not done.
Okay.
I have, maybe you could answer this, Jamie, or this is to put out, you know, more questions. Um, looking at like actual numbers and how we're running the program, I am also curious how each program feels supported within the district with, is it curriculum? Or training, um, those type of things are, do our teachers in our DLI schools and those programs feel like they have the adequate support they need to run the program well?
I mean, I think, yeah, Sarah.
So, just, I, my perspective, what Jamie was saying, that DLI is open for everybody, right? Language can, you can learn language at any age point, right? You can learn Spanish or French at when you're in your thirties or twenties. But based on what your question, I think our teacher would love to have more support if there's students that come in at a later stage. Because with our non-DLI teachers, they do have students that come out of the country or they are, uh, just started to learn English. But they do have interventionists to help them along the way, which DLI teachers, we don't usually have that support. So that's probably the main concern, like, some DLI teacher would think, well, we would love to have our students come to us, but how do we, you know, help them while we are trying to hold tier-one instructions in the classroom? How do we support them with tier-two and tier-three when they have no background knowledge about language at fourth grade or fifth grade? Or even a higher level comes that also a question.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, thank you.
I, I do think though this dates come a long way. Like, when we started Portuguese as a less commonly taught language, like, we had nothing. But, you know, now we're working with a company that's essentially creating a cadence reading in Portuguese. So it's, at this point, I would say with curriculum, none of our languages are struggling. We have access to good materials and, um, and good professional development. Like, Sarah offers things for our professional development days. Um, we, they also, like, um, I mean, Timpugus would be having less, but anybody that's in the state program, they have two PD days a year. They have contact with the state and, and all the curriculum. And so there's a lot of support. So if there was a concern, I would think probably Timpugus might want some more support with, with curriculum. But that, I don't, I can't speak to that because I'm not sure.
They have access to anything that Sarah's doing or the, the district is doing PD-wise, Timpugus still.
Yeah, and the other thing too is that like Spanish is the easiest language to get curriculum in. So for example, like into math, we have Spanish into math. We have wonders available in Spanish. So there's like so many programs available in Spanish. You're not having to seek out these small little curriculums, like, yeah.
I, I do think there are always, because I do hear sometimes from parents when I meet with them or they bring these things up, they'll talk about that they don't feel like the curricular resources are appropriate. But I also hear that when parents talk to me about any curriculum. So, so sometimes like, they'll just be like, well, whatever you're using in secondary math one, it's terrible because I'm a math professor at UCU and this is the worst textbook I've ever seen. So you will get that feedback. Sometimes that, that happens. It, it was a specific example, wasn't it? I didn't mean it to be. It wasn't, anyway. So, um, and, and I do think we always struggle in Chinese. I think Chinese is sometimes harder.
Right. Yeah, I know from, from my, or there's, there's some concern about the support for Chinese and curriculum and... I think even, uh, maybe from the start, understanding that Chinese is harder, like, in what, what is gonna be required to get their kids to that AP test? Outside of it in the classroom maybe, but, like, what does that full picture look like?
All right, so, next steps, we're gonna send out that survey, maybe look at expanding who we're surveying. At the point, gather info from those who chose the non-DLI schools. Um, are we, in the short term, taking this to our parent advisory group?
Yeah, our parent advisory group and our community connections group has actually been talking quite a bit about DLI. So they're very aware of the discussions that are happening. I think there's becoming an awareness that the DLI experience is very different based on which school you're at and, and how, you know, to Jamie's point, when you have the right population, it makes it a lot easier. Um, I think some of our next steps are going to be to have our DLI subcommittee start looking at, are there ways to, um, support DLI maybe in a more, um, I, I don't like the word efficient, but for lack of a better word, that, that might be the way to look at it. Like, as I was talking with Sarah, we were talking about if you put two languages at one school, then you can combine those two languages on the English, in the English class. Um, and so that can actually lower how much FTE you might, you might end up consuming as a result of that. There could be some creative ways to think about that. I haven't thought that all the way through, so somebody will probably find some hole in that, in that particular, um, idea. But also just, I think, um, or are there ways to adjust boundaries so that you are getting a hundred kids per grade level in a DLI school? So that that experience of a non-DLI student is not like, hi, I'm in a first grade class with eleven students and I get to be with these eleven kids for the next seven years. You know, like, that's a really hard situation to be in, so.
So can I suggest if the board members have any other, uh, questions or things that they'd like the committee to look at and consider? Send that, um, to Gina and I and we'll pass it on.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, and get that as part of our ongoing discussion. And then in a future board meeting, we'll get the results of the survey and be talking about it again.
And I, and I think another next step would be, I think we do need to start pulling in some smaller focus groups. Just because I think the experience of student, of parents at Wasatch is, and Canyon Crest are very different than the parents at Lakeview. So that as we start to figure out how to make adjustments to make this program work, that, that we're recognizing and, and hearings, that survey is gonna create a lot of questions that then we can ask those focus groups to get, to kind of piece out some more information.
After the survey, yeah. And I, can I just make one last comment? I do think it needs to be said also that there is an east side, west side issue. I mean, I think at the smaller schools is an issue as well, but we have three programs on the east side. We have two on the west side. How, how full the programs are, the types of languages that are being offered. There's definitely, definitely some equity issues that I think would be, um, worth looking at between the east side and the west side.
All right, we'll move on to our next item, which is our fall sports update.
Yeah, let me find this. I feel like this is the Wendy board meeting. I'm getting tired. I love it. I don't know.
You're gonna be tired before policy.
I know. I gotta, I gotta wake up, right? I gotta wake up.
We're just trying to make you very excited for Christmas break.
I am very, okay. So, um, I appreciate, um, Assistant Superintendent Johnson working with the athletic directors at both Provo High and Timpugu High to pull together our Provo Fall Sports Report and our Timpugu Fall Sports Report. I just wanna clarify some definitions for you. Um, notice that a transfer student is a student who comes in who established eligibility at another school prior to coming to Provo or Timpugu. So it means they have competed, I think at the varsity, they have to compete, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
They establish eligibility elsewhere.
They just have established ability, eligibility elsewhere. So ninth graders have not established eligibility anywhere. So anyone that's coming in from outside of Timpugu or Provo's boundaries is going to be, as a ninth grader, is considered a school choice student or they're a boundary student. Um, and so I just tried to put together just kind of a summary at the, at the end of this that I thought might be, um, helpful. So certainly Provo High has fewer school choice students than Timpugu High School. Provo High has fewer transfer students than Timpugu High School. And, but I think it's fascinating that for Timpugu, Girls Cross Country actually has a much higher percentage of its team that's coming from those transfer athletes. It's forty-seven percent of that total team versus twenty-two percent of football because of just the sheer numbers of students that are competing. Um, the largest numbers of, uh, transfer students, Timpugu Football and Girls Volleyball also have, um, some numbers to pay attention to, um, there. Maybe, maybe I did.
Well, for that school, those are there too.
Yeah, that's right. Um, yes.
You're correct.
No, actually, when I look at Timpugu and I look at, um, because it's school choice that's come, come, um, that's creating the numbers. So you have nine transfer athletes for football and you have five transfer athletes for girls volleyball.
Okay.
That's correct.
Sorry, I missed the, no, you're on. School choice and transfer.
Yes, those are very tricky.
Yeah.
So, um, there's lots of reasons why students transfer. There's lots of reasons why students choice. The choice issue is something that we cannot control in that case because it is protected by state law that any student can go to any school in the state of Utah as long as it's under capacity. The transfer piece is what creates more angst for individuals in that, in that process. But also understand that they do have to go through all of those. UHSAA is the one that establishes whether or not they can compete at the varsity level and what that looks like. So they are the ones that actually provide the clearance for the athlete when they go in to compete. Just so that you know, um, Timpugu is going through its process right now to hire a football coach. So they've had an interim coach, um, Travis Ualle, and now they're running a full process to hire a football coach. And, um, and we know as we've been working with, um, Timpugu High that a, a part of this is, you know, even when you talk with Athletic Director Anai, she talks about wanting people to be at Timpugu and to stay at Timpugu. Wanting people to be at Provo and stay at Provo. Not coming for a year and then you're jumping ship to the next school. But, but be a part of the culture of this school and what it has to offer. Um, and that, and that creates, um, that's something that they want their coaching staff to build and that, and that's something that we want in Provo. You do have a lot of weird things that are happening, and I'll probably let Daryl explain this more, with high school sports where they're, where you're actually getting NIL contracts that are coming in, where a high school athlete is getting paid a certain amount of money to play at the high school level. And then that NIL group will get a percentage of whatever they make if they make it into professional sports. So it's, it's almost professionalizing the high school level. And so those students could take, so like if a person offers to pay me a hundred thousand dollars in an NIL situation to go play for a particular high school, I'll go pay, play for that high school because they're paying me as an athlete. And I can use it to, to pay for an apartment in that school's boundaries. And I am now not a, technically, a transfer student. So I just think we need to be really careful about, I think there's a tendency to sometimes villainize different programs or schools. And I want us to be really cautious about this because, because we have worked really hard this last year to investigate anything that's come forward and, and really follow through on the commitments that we've made in that. But we also need to recognize these outside forces that are also operating and starting to infiltrate into high school athletes as well.
I just wanna clarify, so that, so when groups are coming together, someone asked me about this, to help provide that NIL deal to a high school athlete. Those, those are independent actors, not involved in our schools. They might be parents within our district, so, right?
I mean, they're, it's usually, it's usually a company or a person.
Yeah, so like a Nike or something like that. But can, do they tie that deal to a specific school, to attendance at a specific school? No.
Tie it to the athletes?
It's just to play that sport, for that athlete.
It doesn't mean the athlete.
The athlete built the school, that's what it's about.
That, that's what someone was asking me, like, do, do parents get an NIL deal for students in order to get them in their school or town hall? I said, I, I never heard of that, but...
No, so what happens is that the student is given this amount and then if they make it into the pros, right, then, then they sign a contract that they're gonna give a kickback of whatever, of whatever percentage their pro contract will be when they get drafted into the pros, then that kicks back to the NIL and then they turn around and use that to pay for the next generation of athletes. Well, if I'm an athlete that's going for the pros, I need to pick the programs that are gonna get me to the pros, right? Like, so if that, so, so I'm not gonna, there's gonna, so, so in that way, it's gonna be tied, they are pushing for specific programs that they know have these track records of, of pushing kids into the NFL. Or coaches that have track records of getting kids into the NFL, right? That kinda have this history, so. That's something that we can't control at this point in time, so. And even, even UHSAA can't come and say, you can't, you can't make money as an athlete in this particular respect. Like, that student can't make money in a school's clothing or in their, they have rules about you can't wear their, um, clothing or their logo or anything that's associated with the school. But I as a person can make that money. You can't forbid a person from doing that. Like, it's tricky. So we are, we are moving into a really weird, with everything that's happening with college sports, it's trickling down and affecting, you know, so people who say, I just want it to be the neighborhood, traditional, everybody. It is becoming very, um, competitive and it's becoming, it's, it is very competitive, sorry. Sorry, Terry. It's moving, that level of competition that used to, the intensity is, thank you.
And we need a change at a level higher than what we can control to adjust that, right?
Yeah.
I think the one thing, sorry, to point out, I just, I know everyone probably understands, but the, the number twenty-three for a school choice, when they come in as ninth graders, that number is not just ninth graders. What I'm saying is that number is spread through ninth, twelfth.
They're the ones that came in as ninth graders and have been dedicated to the program.
Ninth graders, I'll permit to play football this year.
Right, right.
But if you average it out as six, right, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's...
So that number probably jumps out a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's really spread across the entire offload groups.
Thank you.
Um, I have some questions.
You have?
So, when they talked about number of participants...
So when they talked about number of participants, how many teams is there? So football, is there four teams or there are three?
There's three, yeah.
Because ninth grade isn't.
Three sanctioned, ninth grade is correct.
Yeah.
It's not due to UHSAA.
And what about cross country and golf and soccer and tennis and volleyball?
Which is.
Are there four teams?
No, just three.
All volleyball can play.
Two for cross country.
Those volleyball is four teams, freshmen, not four, JV and.
So the freshman, the freshman play in a different league, it's not sanctioned.
But there were the freshmen too.
It is.
Yes.
But we don't report those necessarily.
So we're not reporting that necessarily here. Unless they're unless they're participating at a higher level, unless they're participating at a JV team or something like that, yes.
So you're telling me cross country only had two teams?
Correct.
Varsity and JV.
Yep.
And fifty-one kids participated in every single meet?
It's just who's on Register My Athlete, it's just who's on Register My Athlete. They might not, they might not participate in every single meet, it's just we pull it off of Register My Athlete.
But there are all the practices, I mean, some of those groups are very inclusive. I just replied to someone who runs the little P program, they have fifty kids in that program, right?
And with, so like with soccer, that's just two teams, fifty-eight students with two teams.
The varsity and JV, because there isn't a sophomore team for soccer. But it's not the same. Those kids are being taught. All right, DJ, are you ready?
Yes, I do. One thing that's not included, what about the non-sports activities that are sanctioned by UHSAA?
Because that's not what we, that's not what we asked for, so we were asking for sports. And those those activities don't follow transfer rules, there's no transfer rules that follow that. So that's why we didn't report that.
Okay.
We can report that if you'd like us to, but a lot of those actually go over the course of the whole year. So like theater, for example, they don't, they wouldn't get reported in fall sports.
They don't have fall, they have a whole year.
Yes, that's correct. Debate is like that, yep.
Is esports, is that their share, is their first year or?
It's trying to be a pilot, next year will be the first year.
Okay, so this is, this year's their pilot program, okay.
Or they call that emerging sports.
Emerging sports year.
Okay. And then, um, um, Independence does play some sports and they, but they don't do with UHSAA. They do it with a different, I forget the name of the Alternate Schools Association, I forget what it's called.
It's not UHSAA sponsored, so it doesn't follow any of these rules. But if a student wants to from Independence to participate, they would participate with their boundary school.
So are, is this all the information we are required to report to UHSAA then? Or is this just the schools are reporting to the board?
The schools are reporting this to the board, but all of this is pulled from Register My Athlete, which goes up to UHS, which is run by UHSAA.
We ask, we ask, I just have an idea of what's happening in our sports.
Okay.
Regardless of students.
That's all my questions.
The one column that is missing that I would be curious to even follow up on is, I don't know, this is just maybe, how many athletes are we losing to the transfer?
That would be interesting.
Right, we know that, I mean, I can name five or six just off the top of my head, but I don't know that that's important, but it would maybe show a bigger picture.
Right, just show kind of the picture of.
Let's move on to our favorite item of every.
Oh, my gosh, is, are you so excited for policy?
We're gonna start with our first reading of policy.
Okay. Karen, let me stop sharing, I'm gonna find my document and then I'll conduct it. What? What did you say? Oh, it is? Well, that's okay, I can do it, because then I don't have to say, scroll down, Bonnie, scroll down. Yeah. Okay, I think I got it now, it's our first reading. Okay, so I did upload a summary for the policies as well as the policies themselves, but I uploaded that today, so you probably haven't seen that yet, so we'll start going through this. And I'm gonna have Bonnie take really good notes on these, because then she'll be able to take this back to Policy Committee. So Policy thirty-one fifteen is an update to our existing policy, it is homeless students. Updates to this policy support and serve our students experiencing homelessness. And I did meet with Student Services because there were some questions that came up as we were going through the policy, just sure that we're meeting all parts of the policy, parts of this policy and legislation. As I met with Student Services, we talked about changing the word homeless to students experiencing homelessness, because that is the federally acceptable word, so we'll take that suggestion back to Policy Committee. Lines twenty-five through eighty are just definitions. We did have a question in Policy Committee about line forty, lines forty-nine to fifty, about that is not in federal law. And so we recommended that it be taken out because I was talking about unwed mothers and we just thought it was weird because unwed mothers are gonna fall under all of the, any one of the other definitions that protect them. And so it just seemed, it just seems, first off, a little problematic in terms of, I don't know, I just feel like we're in two thousand and five, so.
Labeling like that.
The statement is requiring us to update this policy?
Yes. Lines ninety-four to one seventeen are all of the requirements for how we determine where a student, when a student is experiencing homelessness and where they shall attend school. I did have some questions that I got resolved with Student Services where if a student has temporary housing, meaning that it's not their parent's home that they're living in, there was some discussion about that they might not be classified as homeless, and so I had some concerns about that because then they're they're still susceptible to being able to be kicked out of their home at any point in time. And they did such a good job, they're like, well, there is a difference between moving in with your parents because you lost your job versus I'm moving in with my parents so I can build a two million dollar home and we're just living there while it's being constructed. And I was like, excellent point. And so they ask those follow-up questions as they're determining that particular status, so. We do have to provide immediate enrollment of a McEnanyvento student, that's often what we also refer to our homeless students as. And the goal is always to try to keep stability in a student's enrollment. So even if they move into another area, we try to work with the family to keep, so say they started in Tempehue and then they moved to Orem, we would work with Alpine School District or the new Tempehue School District to transport them, to keep them at Tempehue if that's what the student or parent wanted. Because the more transitions you have in your schooling, the less likely it is that you're going to graduate. And then we do automatically waive their fees if they're classified as McEnanyvento. Any questions about a student's place of residence? The student is always enrolled until the issue is resolved, that's in line one thirty-nine. And then we work through our process if there are concerns, if there's concerns brought up by the school or by Student Services, we work through the district office and all of that. And then if it does allow us to take it to the state superintendent and to the state school board if it can't be resolved at that point. Lines one forty-two through one forty-nine, just talk about guardianship and how it affects the student's residence. If for some reason a student is, their guardianship is transferred to somebody within the district, then they become a resident of the district, just as clarifying that language. We did get rid of the heading enrollment in school of origin because we just felt like it fell under enrollment. And then we established in lines two eleven through two twenty-six, how it establishes the criteria for the best place to enroll a student that's experiencing homelessness. Sometimes it is better that they're closer to where they're residing at the time, but sometimes if it's like a junior or a senior, you don't want to disrupt that educational experience. And then we struck the lines two sixty-two through two sixty-three because it already stated earlier in the section how we handle enrollment disputes. And then lines three thirteen through three eighteen, we do have to post this information physically in the schools. We have provided them in the past, but we have not audited this to make sure that they are displayed. So we're gonna do that through creating those posters, distributing them through principal leadership meetings and talking with our social workers, which are often kind of the point of contact for our McEnanyvento liaison. And our primary liaison is Lauren Schoenfeld, with also Liz Robles and our student family advocates supporting with this. And then we do have to have an official way in which a person files a complaint. We do have that established in Policy seventy-three fifteen, but that policy definitely needs to be updated. It's it's pretty outdated and we need to have, so that's something Policy Committee needs to look at. We will share the draft with Student Services, our recommendation is to take any ideas or revisions or concerns back to Policy Committee and then we can bring it back in January. Questions? All right, we can talk about dual enrollment, Policy thirty-one twenty. This is, some schools talk about dual enrollment in the same way that we talk about concurrent enrollment. In the state's definition, these are very different. So concurrent enrollment is what a student does when they're taking credit out of, in a high school course and getting college credit for it. Dual enrollment is, I'm a student that's enrolled in a public school, but I might be enrolled in a charter school and one of our district schools, I could be enrolled in a private school and one of our schools, I could be homeschooled and one of our schools. So there's, it establishes the process for partially enrolling that student. We receive the funding based on the enrollment percentage in our district schools. A dual-enrolled student has access to all of the same programs that a full-time student has and they have to follow all the same rules that a full-time student has to with attendance, truancy, school rules, all of those pieces. Lines twenty-three through twenty-six, a student who receives a Utah Fitz-All scholarship is not considered a dual enrollment student because this student cannot receive FTE funding and the UFA scholarship. And since we are not a provider for those UFA recipients, they cannot be a dual-enrollee and they can't enroll in our schools. Lines twenty-eight through thirty-three, students with disabilities can participate in dual enrollment and then the school works with preparing the IEP and we do have funding that is tied to that. And so our recommendation is just to make sure this policy is reviewed by a district leadership team. We can place it on the website for feedback. We didn't get any feedback on our last postings of policies. Sometimes we get more than others, but and then we can bring it back to January after Policy Committee. Questions? Oh, Policy thirty-one forty-two, exchange students, I'm really hoping that Jennifer knows all of the rules tied to this, so. We didn't really change anything in the policy with J-one visas. It just establishes that we do allow foreign exchange students and that we have processes in place to manage them according to state law. But the procedure has some updates that are part of this. So it outlines how we enroll exchange students and the requirements that we follow for these enrollees. We struck the background information from lines eleven through twenty-one because we thought it was weird. Like, it didn't even really make sense why it was there, it was like, well, the legislature in this year. So we just got rid of that. Lines twenty-six through twenty-eight, we do not pay for students with other funds over and above those that qualify for the state money, so we struck that language. It does allow us to do this, but we don't practice that, so we just removed that from our policy because it is a may. Lines thirty-nine to forty-eight gives the parameters that we follow for enrolling foreign exchange student. Fifty-seven to one oh eight, the requirements that an affiliated agency must meet tied to that, so that we know that there are protections for these students. Lines one twenty-nine through one thirty, foreign exchange students do not receive diplomas, but typically in our school district, we have allowed them to participate in graduation ceremonies. There are many districts that don't allow that, so I think it's kind of a cool thing that we allow. And then one thirty-five to one thirty-nine, there's additional language in the procedure as to who the student may contact or the school may contact if there are serious problems that are arising, like if we feel like the post-family isn't taking care of the student or if there's some sort of danger or something like that, that would be outside of the agency if the agency wasn't responding appropriately. And then lines one forty-two to one forty-five, they are included in school membership and attendance counts to the extent permitted under Utah law. We can ask our team review this and then take it back to Policy Committee. Any questions?
I have a question for Jennifer, actually. Were you able to read through the procedure and all the policies out here?
Not yet.
No, it's fine, I'm sorry, you gave so much great feedback already with your notes on this. So I just would love our eyes on this procedure, because as I read through it, I have enough kind of content myself to hang this on to know if there was something missing or if it makes sense.
I will, I will.
Okay, sorry.
Policy thirty-one thirty-five is a new policy, this is admissions and attendance and re-entry into public schools. So this is enrolling students that are coming from private or homeschooling options and they're returning to public schools. Private school students are placed according to their grade level and credits from the prior school's record. That is if the private school is an accredited institution. If it's non-accredited, then we evaluate it using assessment tools that we typically use to determine placement and grade level proficiencies. Homeschooled students, lines twenty-six through twenty-nine, are placed in the grade level classes or courses that the student's parent and administrator deem as appropriate. And lines thirty to thirty-three, the student's teacher or the parent can request a conference if they feel like that that placement needs to change, but it has to happen within thirty days of enrollment. If the parent agrees, then the placement change is just made. So if the teacher's like, I don't, I feel like the student needs to be in on a higher grade because they're way advanced. And the teacher's like, yeah, me too, then, you know, and the parent's like, yes, let's do it, then we can, that process goes much more quickly. If there is a disagreement between the parent and the school, then the student's subject, their mastery will be evaluated either by the school or a private entity as long as it aligns with state course standards and the parent does have to pay for that assessment. Lines forty-eight to fifty-eight, students must fulfill graduation requirements. There is no acceptance of homeschool credits towards graduation. Now, students, parents can bring in student work that's been completed as part of home education and that can be evaluated by our educators to determine if that constitutes what that would look like. We can also have students demonstrating proficiency through competency-based assessments as well. But it does allow us to make sure that a student is placed correctly when we haven't had those records coming in. So this is helpful in that way. Any questions on that policy? Vision screening, this has always been our practice. We have not had this in policy, so we're just making sure it is in policy and in alliance with our current practice. It talks about how volunteers are trained, make sure that if a student is scoring low on a vision screener, it's not because of a language barrier, to make sure that that's the case. And we also do have to rule out vision as a reason for a low Acadian score. So if a student isn't progressing, then we have to make sure that we have done a recent vision screening, so.
I've had, I've been a volunteer with these, and cute little kindergartners have no idea what an E is, you know?
Well, they don't know what the letter is yet, so it's tricky.
So they have to, okay, can you see Mickey Mouse? That's a much better.
There you go. So you get trained in all in all of those things. Immunization, same thing, Policy thirty-one seventy-five, it is a new policy, it is part of state law and part of our practice. We did add a purpose statement at the beginning tying it to student well-being to ensure that we're in compliance with state law. It establishes the definitions and establishes that immunizations are required for school admission except for circumstances laid out in the policy, which are if you've had a vaccination, you have you have proven immunity or you have filled out an exemption form. It also talks about how those records are maintained and who they can be shared with. And then states that the requirements are for a medical or personal exemption and that a student can be enrolled if that exemption is in place. There is conditional enrollment, thirty days after the school provides notice of deficient immunizations that allows the school to communicate with the parent or guardian, they have to tell them what they're deficient in and it gives the parent time to get their immunizations up to date. And if that immunization is not received within that conditional enrollment, the student could be prohibited from attending school. You can extend conditional enrollment, say it's a it's a two-vaccine administration or if there is a true belief that the parent's gonna get it done and something has just come up as a result. Newcomers to the country are considered an extenuating circumstance, so we generally will do a conditional enrollment there as well. Also, military, children of military parents are still subjected to immunization requirements. And if there is an outbreak of a specific disease and a student is not immunized, we have a choice as a school district where we can either provide a separate educational environment to protect them from other students or we can prevent them. environment to protect them from other students or we can prevent them from attending school. And generally, we just prevent them from attending. There is a outbreak. Any questions on this one?
I have kind of a little bit of an off question, but and you may not know the answer right now, can you give back to me?
Okay.
But it talks about the exemption form with the least two legally responsible individual. I'm just thinking of divorce situations and if the two parents both have educational rights for their students, if they disagree on immunizations, do we have a way we handle that?
Yep. If the parent says, if one of the parents says yes, you allow, you say they have to go with the immunization. Like unless the divorce decree says this person makes all the educational decisions, any parent can accept that. And the other parent would have to go to court to handle that.
So if one wants immunization, another one, we won't accept the exemption if we know that the other one wants immunization.
I think it would depend on whoever is registering the kid and who the parent, who the kid is primarily living with. But if they're living, if they're split fifty-fifty, then that's going to have to work out with that parent.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have a clear procedure process in place so that we don't get ourselves in trouble.
No, so, so in that, in that particular instance, what would happen is if a parent provided an exemption form, if one of the parents provided the exemption form, that would exempt them from the immunizations. We just enroll them. If the other parent's frustrated because they want their child immunized, they're going to have to work that out and put that into the system.
Do we need to put that in the policy?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Sure.
Policy fifty-seventy, contracts for certified employees. This is a new policy. This has been put in place to make sure that because you have a collective bargaining agreement with an association, it doesn't prohibit you from having an individual contract for employment. So for, I was trying to think of some examples of when this might happen. So we obviously have a negotiated agreement with our teachers, but let's say we had a teacher that was coming in from another district and we were trying to figure out where they land on the salary schedule and they have a specific skill set that becomes really important, then that's something where HR is going to work with that particular teacher to determine how we're placing them on that salary schedule and what that looks like. So it creates a slightly different contract maybe than what typically would be followed because it might be a high needs area or it might be the day before school starts or those, those typical pieces. So it's just stating that you can't, a collective bargaining agreement cannot prohibit those individual contracts from being in place, which is why we do make every single employee sign an individual contract. Just because the association signs off on the negotiated agreement, every single employee has to sign off on their own contract, which establishes what their pay is. It also allows us to create a separate salary schedule for medical specialists. We have not chosen to do that and so, but it is in policy that if a future board chose to do that, they could. So we kept that in the policy. And that, lines thirty-five through thirty-nine means that you can't, you can't anticipate. So for example, if, if I'm, if my contract ends and I want to try to sue for potential earnings that I would have, there's no, there's no assumption of that contract continuing beyond that particular year. So there's no property interest that is defined by that. So it just protects us legally in that way. Questions on that policy? Okay, fifty-two oh five, employment requirements, physical examinations. This is a new policy. It does allow for a school district to require an applicant or an employee to provide evidence that they are mentally and physically qualified to perform the duties of the job, the essential functions of the job. Anyway, so we've laid that out. I'm trying to find where this is in code and I figured out it isn't in public education code. It actually is in labor laws. So that's where I've got to find the actual, because we were talking about we needed to have the reference. We don't have the legal code that it's tied to, so that's something that policy committee will work for, work towards. And also, this policy also allows administrators to obtain information from USVE relevant to the potential employment of a candidate or relevant to a current employee. So if there's something where we're interviewing a candidate and we want to make sure that that person isn't going through a U-PAC investigation, which is, I know, Utah Professional Practices Advisory Commission, I think is what it stands for. So that, that governs all of the licenses of public school employees so that we could contact them to make sure there wasn't a U-PAC referral or a current investigation. And we do, if we choose not to hire somebody based on that information, then we do have to give them the opportunity to respond to that information and that we are exempt from liability related to correct information that is shared from those individuals. This, this policy needs to go out to the associations and then also placed on website for feedback, so.
Are we thinking with the fiscal, then maybe HED or?
Yes. Well, I think, yes, I think it could be either. I think it could be either one. Yeah, it needs to go to, that's why I put both associations, put the associations. Policy fifty-eighty-one is no implied contract rights. It establishes that there is no implied contract rights between, beyond those granted in the policy. And this is where it gets a little bit tricky. So in policy fifty-two eighty, we do state that an employee who is of career status and who has an acceptable evaluation has an expectation that their job will continue unless otherwise notified. So that's what we operate off of. And so the question that, that I think policy committee and this group needs to wrestle with is do we actually need this policy or do we add it as a procedure to fifty-two eighty rather than, because I don't want people to think that there's no implied, that we're adopting a no implied contract because that's going to make a whole bunch of teachers really concerned if, if they think that every single year they're going to be up for worrying about whether or not they have a job. Our, our policy is that yes, you do if you are a career employee. It's only the provisional employees that can be, that can be at risk. There's still notification that's tied to that. So I want to push people to this, to this other policy. So anyway, just thoughts that you can send to policy committee about that because I do think there could be benefit of connecting it to that other policy just so that it's clearer and that we don't have employees that are concerned about that. So that we can get the associations feedback on that. Thoughts?
If it makes sense. So this will be live feedback tomorrow on the website.
Hopefully. We usually get it up within a day or two.
I like maybe I'm tying it to the other policy personally.
Well, and maybe this language even, the only reason I wanted to put it in as a procedure is because then you don't have to come back and re-vote on policy fifty-two eighty if we added this language into fifty-two eighty.
No, that's great.
So.
Yeah, it's already required, making it, that needs to be a policy.
As long as it's a procedure, I, I think what you're seeing is you're seeing, how do I say this, you're, you're seeing some, I say this appropriately. There are some individuals that make policy at a much higher level than where we're at that are trying to, I think, try to limit what collective bargaining is allowing us to do in schools and what contracts look like and make it more, there, there are some individuals, say even in the legislature, that are trying to make every single employee an at-will employee in a school that's not based on contracts. There is no career, there, there are legislators that don't want any career status for educators. And so I, I think you're seeing some pieces of this kind of coming through in here, but I don't want our employees to be worried about that, that high career status. Go ahead, Lisa.
I think in fifty-two eighty, I might be mistaken, but I feel like we kind of already say this.
We do.
Maybe invert it like you were saying earlier. So I do think adding it maybe as just procedural language, if people even feel like that's needed.
Maybe, and maybe we don't even need it because it's already in fifty-two eighty.
I'm not sure we would need a seven. It doesn't sound like a procedure on its own. It would need to be a statement within the procedure that's already there.
Right.
Fifty-two eighty is a very, very lengthy policy.
Okay, but they're not a procedural.
I don't believe so. I can't.
But I do feel like it's there in the policy.
Yeah, as long as it's in the policy. I do feel like this is a policy, not a procedure, but that it should be tied. We can look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Policy forty-two oh two is about electronic resources and this was brought to our attention by our tech department because we have to review this policy once every three years and I don't see this as going to be reviewed until twenty. So we're putting, there are also several procedures that are tied to this policy that will be reviewed, that we will bring and make sure that policy committee looks at. I just wanted your eyes on it first and foremost. Devon was working with, I think JP to put this together. So definition, we added a definition of network services of what that is and explains why we have electronic resources and why there are benefits that outweigh the risks associated with it. And then we did have to add in lines forty-five through forty-seven, it is required by law that we have a definition of obscene material so that that's part of our filtering services. So we referenced our policy where we actually define obscene material. We also added on line forty-nine that we want to be transparent and if an individual is using our Wi-Fi, we do access and monitor their device, like we can see what they're searching on the web. So just so you know, Bailey, you're on our Wi-Fi, all of those students, we can track what's going on. It's, it's exposed to those filtering pieces.
And that includes personal cell phones that are on Edgy Room.
Right. Yeah, if you're on Edgy Room and you walk into the building and your phone is on that, like, like they can see that I'm in this building. They can see where I'm at, in what school and where I'm located. So. Schools must provide, this is the tricky part, sixty-one through seventy, school-wide or classroom training to students and employees. We do this through our state schools for employees. I think we have this very hit and miss in our schools. So one of our processes for MTSS would be to probably have our teaching and learning department help us put together some training that could be common based on different grade levels and grade appropriate for what that might look like.
Yeah, this came up at Wasatch Community Council. We aren't in compliance, but so they're trying to, what should we do? What has been effective, it did seem if there was a, some resources.
We just need some resources put together.
The same, yeah.
And then we can just say, and we can just say, within the first thirty days of school and then this is by grade level, you know, because kids are using that technology. I think sometimes we make assumptions that our secondary students know what the consequences are if they misuse it or do something terrible and then later they're like, oh man, could be problematic, so. And then we will make sure that this gets reviewed in an open meeting at least once every three years, so.
Website says it was last reviewed in twenty-twelve.
Oh, twenty-twelve? Yes.
It's been a bit.
Even better. Hot minute.
Back before computers were even a thing.
Line sixty-six, that, like from a sample policy, is that in code? I just find this very interesting. It says, one of the things to cover in this training are the benefits of connecting to the internet and utilizing the school's internet filters.
I'm glad you knew the answer to that.
That is in the policy that the state.
Okay. The benefits of connecting to the internet.
No, so what they don't want to do is they want to explain to parents and to students why you don't want to use your cell service on your phone and why you would want your kids to use Wi-Fi because when your kids use Wi-Fi, then, then their kid is using the filtering service. If they, if they pull off of the Wi-Fi, then that filtering service isn't utilized.
Okay, then can I suggest a word change?
Yes, absolutely.
Then it's a connecting to the internet to utilize the school's internet or then it's a connecting to the school's internet.
Schools.
Filters. Yeah, just get out, take out the first. Because it is, the way it's written makes it sound like, hey, these are all the reasons why you want to go online all the time. Like, I don't think that's what we want to teach.
No, that isn't what, that isn't what we can clarify. Okay, any questions about first readings? Oh, that's so much fun, you guys.
You're five minutes ahead.
Am I five minutes ahead?
So good.
Okay, here we go. We're going to go to second reading.
Second reading.
Which are the ones we're going to vote on?
Yes. And on these policy summaries, they're the same policy summaries as we did on the first readings, except if it's blue, then that is what we kind of talked about as a policy committee and added clarification on. Jennifer sent us an email about some of the typos. Those have all been fixed now and, and then we have still some questions about a couple of those things, but I'm just like, oh my gosh, how have I read this policy?
I know, I thought I was saying I don't care.
That's why, unless you see it so many times, you don't speak.
I'm like, oh my gosh.
It's crazy.
Okay. So policy fourteen-ten, this is the public notice requirements of board meetings. We did clean up the language on lines thirty, on twenty-eight, thirty to thirty-one for how we give written notice of meetings so that it made more sense. So you'll see some strike-throughs in that. And then line seventy-five through eighty, we clarified the language for public hearings for tax and budget purposes, particularly when the board is holding a hearing as well as another business meeting on what rules must be followed in those instances. And then line ninety-five, it talked about a meeting and then later it talked about a hearing. So we just made sure that that language matched because it was confusing as to what we were talking about, so. Any questions on that policy? This is going to be the policy that I remember for all my days. Me and Devon are going to remember this policy forever. Okay. Procedure one had no additional changes other than some of the things that Jennifer let us know about. I think that was actually mostly procedure two. And then we do recommend that this policy and the accompanying procedures be included. All right, fourteen-twenty-four is about community involvement in education. There were a couple of things that have changed since last time. So lines nineteen through twenty-six, we actually moved that paragraph from a lower section and put it up top because it gives a more general overview. We decided not to take it out because it does provide an overview of all of the opportunities for people to be involved and since this is a policy on community involvement in education, that felt pertinent. We changed the phrase on line thirty-four from advice of the public to input from the public. We felt like that was more accurate. And then lines fifty-two to fifty-six, we established how the committees provide community members with more direct access to district leadership and remove references to parent groups and councils that existed in the past. And then line seventy-five through seventy-seven, we removed this as it is unnecessary and being involved in this committee still takes time because it talked about, we realized that people don't have the time to be involved in PTA. And I'm like, as much as we bother people on parent advisory committee and community connections committee, I'm like, we've got to remove that. And then we cleaned up some of the language in lines eighty-five to ninety-nine. Procedure one is all about the parent advisory committee. Procedure two is all about the community connections committee. And in both of those procedures, we clarified language about that it's board leadership that went in and selected those individuals. So board members submitted all of those names and board leadership and was determined to know. Any questions? Thirty-three oh five is about student privacy plan and sex-designated facilities. Summary, students must use the sex-designated facility that corresponds with their biological sex as defined in the policy on lines thirty-five to thirty-seven. So biological sex is defined on those lines. We do have to provide notice of this in registration, which we are putting together. We have a lot of notifications that have to go through online registration, much more than we have in the past, so that will all be updated. Our recommendation is that we, this is in alignment with state law and let me go ahead. Are you adopted this evening? Questions? Thirty-ten is about school eligibility and admissions requirements. It lays out residency requirements and identification requirements. It is an existing policy, but we needed to add the definition of minimum age for school enrollment. So that's what was added to this particular policy. Thirty-one eighteen, we got some really great clarification. I want to thank Jason Garrison for his work on this. So I had Jason Garrison go back and talk with other districts as well as to the original legislation on the five-dollar fee for permits. It does state in the legislation may and not shall, so that's why we have extracted all of that because we would prefer not to charge that. It's just a pain in the butt to do that. It's just a pain in the butt to do that. So we are recommending that throughout the policy and the procedure, we strike that language. And I believe that we have done that effectively. We also know in lines one-thirty-nine to one-forty that our state system does constitute notification between districts. And so we struck the language that we have to provide separate notification for that. Lines one-ninety-eight to one-ninety-nine about special education, I added this just for clarification. We don't get funded once our prevalence rate goes above a certain percentage. That's usually fourteen percent. So if we allowed a whole bunch of students to come in from outside of the district that were students with disabilities, what we're doing is we're taking that same pot of money and we're distributing it across a larger number of students. So when we're dealing with open enrollment, during the open enrollment period, we allow anybody to come in. It doesn't matter. It's during the late enrollment period, we may close it based on that special education is a specific program and we may not have the ability to continue to serve that program. So we can close based on that. Any questions on that one?
I missed, for my own information, how come they don't fund above like a certain number?
It's ju, I would have to ask Nate that question. It's just something that the federal government does in terms of how it funds. But I'll, I can ask more about that, so. They're, they're recognizing that, that people with disabilities that need modified instruction are, their statistics show it's about this percentage of the population. So once it goes higher than that, then you're just trying to get more money from the federal government.
It's trying to save the safety.
Check it out.
And special funding is based on the December one enrollment from the year before.
That's correct.
So if there's additional students that will, we are not given additional funding. It's based on the year before.
Year before, okay, interesting.
And then the procedure one, we struck the language about the five-dollar fee. We fixed that on all of those lines. Any questions on that one? You guys are an easy group tonight. I think that's mostly because most of you didn't read the policies for the first reading. But that's okay, I won't out any of you. That's fine. Three thousand and five, kindergarten admissions and attendance. Our lines nineteen through twenty-three, our principals have indicated that they would like us to start kindergarten registration earlier than what we have typically done since March first. So we had a conversation about that. And they would really like some consistent communication from the district about kindergarten. So it's the same in every single school. And that we make sure that we're communicating what our half-day option is, what our full-day option is. And I think this was too, I, I don't remember if it's in this policy or the other one, about the half-day kindergarten. We definitely want, this was what the kindergarten teachers at Westridge were really adamant about. Like, please let our parents know like what a big difference it makes to be in a full-day program. And so share that data with parents. Obviously, they have a choice to be in a half-day situation, but we want to make sure that they understand the benefits that it has to be in a full-day program.
Sorry, did you get a March first date then? I thought you just said people want it earlier even than that.
Yeah, they do, they, they want us to start that process.
So do we need to change that in this policy where it says on line twenty, shall communicate that deadline to the district?
It's just by March first, so we can start, so we can start earlier.
Just have it done by March.
Done by March. Yep. Any questions about this policy? Student data protection, is this our last one? Because I'm going to be so excited. Oh my gosh, this is amazing. Okay, policy thirty-six fifty, student data protection. We linked the cybersecurity framework into the policy itself so that people could access that if needed. And then line one-seventy, and this is something even in our data privacy plan, we have to put in place a formal request process for the parent to complete if they're seeing that a record is incorrect. We basically just say, you need to reach out and do this. We actually do need to create that space where that will happen. So we will do that and put that into this policy. That's part of the policy, but we're already, we've already got downgraded on that, on the student data plan. But we will get that fixed. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. And I'm happy to bring that back to you so that you can see what that looks like when we have that corrected. The policy does need to be put, we, this is a brand-new policy and we do need to have it in place by state law. Any questions about those? I think I'm done. Okay.
We need to start all that work.
Good job. You're only partially asleep, so that's good.
Christie's definitely asleep.
Oh.
I am not asleep. I have two meetings right now.
She got in so early.
Can we just, like, highlight though, there is so much here. And you and your team not only have read and studied all these policies, but you have five million other responsibilities as part of your job. And so just, I don't know how you find time to do it all. Thank you. Our next. Our next item is our consent calendar review and questions. So does anyone have any questions on our consent?
I do.
Go for it.
Impact fees? I thought we didn't pay impact fees.
So those are the hookup fees and the equipment fees. So those, those bills were around seven hundred and fifty thousand in the original.
Oh, excellent. I, I mean, I thought we were given a pass because we allowed the city to put ice underneath Shoreline to connect the rest of the city.
Yeah, so a lot of the fees they took off. So that, between both schools, there was about, about six hundred thousand that they removed from those impacts. This is just the equipment amount of fees.
Okay, I have a question along with this. We made a deal with the, with Wausatch that they were going to give us a million dollars for.
By taking the dirt out?
And that was not necessarily dollars, that was dirt.
Was that work?
That they did not take as much as they were planning.
So it can't be like translated into some other type of service or like a tap-toe to it?
It was a, this much of dirt will move, which could be valued at this. It wasn't, they will give you a million dollars.
I thought it was a dollar amount. Yeah, okay.
Um, I had some, Jason. I saw in, when the employee's last work day was like twenty-seventeen or something.
Last work?
Yeah.
On terminations, it'll show twenty-seven.
On the consent calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, some, sometimes the employees will be employees that they intend on coming back. Like coaches are one of those.
Yeah, but specifically with about a whole lot of coaches.
So, and we clean them up every few years to, to make sure that anybody that hasn't come back or that we know is never coming back. The issue when you have a coach come in, their fingerprints remain active. And if you terminate them, you have to do that again.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, you'd say so, but some of the schools take a little bit longer to get to their list.
I did know, there was a second column there that said, last day the HR was notified.
I do wonder too though on that, where we have them as volunteer fees, whether or not they wouldn't be seen as working because it's volunteer status. So they might still be on for us since twenty-seventeen, but they're doing volunteer work.
Oh, gotcha.
So that might be the last time they were paid, but they're still doing volunteer work.
Gotcha. And then I saw on the open enrollment counts document, my question was, what is dual meaning? But then I went over the.
Yeah.
Yeah. The policy, I was like, oh, never mind, I know what that means now.
Wow, I've wondered that a long time since I told me did that policy and I understood that mattering.
And then, yeah, I noticed with the Alpine accounts, you'll have to start dividing that up. That's all my questions.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to just for your information, our upcoming board calendar. There is a joint legislative committee meeting on Thursday. And if anyone wants to come up with me, you're welcome to do so. Or there's a Zoom link, I emailed you guys today.
Yeah.
And then Gina or Melanie, do you guys want to just explain student advisory council? Or Bailey could explain the student coun, advisory council meeting change that we made to not meet at the beginning of January.
Um, yeah, so we just moved it later in the month so that, what does the craziness of starting in the semester? We just changed the date so that we wouldn't be missing new classes and stuff, so.
And then there won't be the one at the beginning of February because they'll just have that one and then they're, the students are coming up to the Capitol.
Oh, that's great.
The day after they would have had a meeting in February. So, yeah, Melanie and Gina can work out which board members will go to the.
So there were two board members that were going to attend three. Can I just put that one off?
Perfect.
So I'll inform you guys.
We're all good. Okay. Um, and then we do have our USBA conference coming up. And anybody have any questions about Melanie? Okay.
Somebody's gone to Bryce Canyon for.
I know, I did. Wish it was me.
Sounds good.
Um, do we have a motion to adjourn our study session?
I'm sure that we adjourned the study session.
A motion made by Vice President Hills. Do we have a second?
I'll begin.
A second by board member voice.
We are adjourned and we will begin our busy.
What if we all were done?
And Felicity.
Bonnie, do we need to find out?
Oh, okay.
All right, okay. Okay.
I have a ten, please, okay? Okay.
Thanks for finding that.
Yes, of course.
I do, I'm coming.